April 7th, can we have the roll call?
Commissioner Neely. Commissioner Nacida. Commissioner West. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Crocker. Commissioner Peterson. Commissioner Shaw.
Here.
Commissioner Norris. And Vice Chair Walters.
I'd like to take a moment to have the mayor introduce a very special person, so thank you.
Well, good evening, we have a very special person. And it is my great honor to introduce to you our brand new city manager, who is, it's his first day on the job, and this is David Frazier. And we're delighted to welcome you here this evening, it's your very first Urban Renewal Commission, and your very first day at work. Probably been a long one.
And I know a lot of times we do introduce people, but we have a lot of people here today, so I'd like to go straight into the meeting. We're gonna go to agenda, I have two citizen comments, and I'm just saying we have one comment.
Tom O'Brien.
O'Brien, Oregon City. I just wanted to bring something to your attention that I think is probably detrimental to future historians. Since we as a city take such great pride in our historic past. I was reviewing the commission reports for both of tonight's meetings. And I found that in one instance, and it is to be complimented, on the accuracy of our report, the other six reports contain a gross inaccuracy. They list that they in fact were approved by David Crocker. And since David hasn't even been sworn in yet, and these appeared on our website, available to the public on April 1st, I'm not quite sure how that could be historically accurate. So I bring that to your attention and ask you to remedy the situation.
Item number three, future agenda items.
I don't know how we do this, oh, excuse me, I gotta get myself on.
Yeah.
Don't worry about that.
Poor you, Mr. West. Well, we can't let our new city manager just come and have an easy first night here. We've gotta load up the jockey a little, I think, so. I don't know where or what we as a group have decided, but, and if this is the right meeting versus city council, but I'd like to know where we are with the circulation study, and the doubt, and the parking study as it applies to urban, within the urban renewal district, and when we're going to be working or implementing those. And I was at a meeting earlier this week, from the Clackamas County Congressional Briefing in March of 2010, Mayor Norris, and the, someone asked at the meeting why our Main Street, our, miss, why our Main Street sidewalks wasn't brought up in this document. So that's another. As a priority for funding.
Would you please?
Is the document, the document is?
Well, it's what the county was lobbying at in DC, so I'll pass it down. So I just wanted to know the status of that project. Someone, actually Mayor Knapp from Wilsonville said, "How come that's not in there?" So, and then I'd also like to know what's the timeline for the Main Street Design Guidelines to be adopted. I'd like to see those adopted before we get into our grant, our Urban Renewal Small Fassad Grant Grants for the next fiscal cycle.
Care to respond to that?
Yes, we have one more meeting of some, subcommittee at least, to go over some of the issues that were brought up at the last Urban Renewal Commission meeting. We anticipate getting that to you before the start of the next fiscal year.
Talking about the Main Street Guidelines or the small facade?
About the storefront grant program.
I didn't.
There's two, two sets of guidelines we're working on. We need the Main Street Guidelines, I feel, in order, I'd like to see those approved in order to move forward with our facade grants for the $10,000. It's to my understanding that when we, when we started the Main Street program, that those would be the design guidelines for downtown. And it would be nice if they linked somehow to the storefront grants.
No, isn't Main Street overseeing that process?
I understand the draft was produced by the Main Street.
Well, it is, but we're all connected here, so I'm asking.
It might be a good topic for a work session, to decide exactly what you want to do with those. I mean, if, if you want to use those guidelines as a part of an approval criteria for reviewing projects downtown, that's a pretty big step. So if that's what we want to use those for, then I think we should probably have that discussion in a work session.
Um, is it, let me ask the rest of this group then, is it to my unders, it is to my understanding that those would be the design guidelines that would correlate with our $10,000 facade grants. Am I incorrect?
Correct. What we've, what we've done, as recall, we had a subcommittee of Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Walters, and myself. And what we did is we went through the complete list of the Main Street Guidelines, and we pulled out just the ones that related to facade improvements.
Okay, there you go, thank you. One note to add, I know that the Main Street Oregon City Design Guidelines Group recently recruited Carter Stein to try to get that effort moving along, and so I know that's underway. And it might be a good opportunity to have a work session with that group as well, so I like the suggestion.
I could apply for the circulation study. The, we're ready, almost about ready to move into the phase two of that study, and I've been working with the D L C D staff person in reviewing the scope of work for that. And they have tried to reduce some of the work scope so that the cost isn't as high as it would have been. And Lloyd Purdy and I are doing the final review on that work scope. And at that time, I believe they have negotiated a price with a consultant, and at that time they'll be ready to kick off phase two. Phase two is expected to be completed in August of this year.
I can respond to the Clackamas County book. The, our Main Street Streets and our Sidewalk Rehabilitation Project is actually a regional priority for federal funding. And the book that just went around is Clackamas County's Priority for Clackamas County. So if Oregon City had a book, we'd have one project on the list. It is true that I said that as Clackamas County's number one priority, but it's a, it's a regional priority for federal funding. So that's their lobbying book that they go back to Washington DC to talk about, and they don't talk about our projects in that. But when we're all together as a region, then we hold hands and support that as a project, so we're hoping that will give us more, more weight in the federal decision making.
Commissioner Norris. Doug Neely.
Just a request for a, I'll phrase it in a specific way. An update on Rossum Landfill 2, what might be happening there. I don't, I don't necessarily request one now, but as a part of a future work session.
Commissioner Nacida.
Two items to propose to the agenda in the future. One is at our Urban Renewal Commission Retreat in January, I think I recall that we discussed having a similar retreat with our new city manager once he arrived. And I think it'd be very nice to, to start thinking about scheduling that for the near future. And the second thing I'd like to propose is relates to the letter that we all received from Northwest Environmental Defense Center a while back, just prior to, I think, our last meeting, expressing some concerns. I'd like to get them before us in a work session and see what their concerns about, what they have to say.
Commissioner West.
Can you remind me what that was about?
There were, this was before we approved the extension of time for the developers of the Cove Project to obtain financing for the apartment complex. And they had written us all a letter expressing concerns over endangered species issues. And endangered species ads. And I'd like to hear what they have to say about that.
Item four, excuse me, addition of the agenda.
Move it up.
Oh, okay. All right. Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, moving on to item five, general business.
Five A, presentation for project Oregon 213 I-205 Redland Road Crossing, AKA Jug Handle Improvement, Kettleson and Associates and OPEC Consulting Engineers.
I would like to just introduce the group, if you have mind. Thank you very much, and thank you. Good evening, Urban Renewal Commission. As you know, we've been working hard on the Oregon 213 Washington Street Intersection Improvements, AKA the Jug Handle for, at least eighteen months now. And when we received funding from the legislature to, for the construction, we went full borehead on the final design. And the project team is primarily comprised of OPEC Consulting Engineers. They're doing all the civil engineering work in the bridge design. And then Kettleson is doing the traffic engineering. And Phil Worth and Hermanis are here, Hermanis Stein are here tonight to give you a fairly comprehensive update on the project. And we would like, we appreciate you indulging us. We will take probably at least a half an hour of your time tonight, but because it is such a large project for the city and the region, we think it's very important for this body to be very knowledgeable in the activities and the scope of the project. The other individuals here, should there be questions that arise, are Rick Harrison, he's worked with OPEC, and he works with the civil design work. And he is working for Gene Lawson and Associates as our public involvement consultant. And Alito Foman Goodrich is our project manager from Public Works. So with that, I just want, I think that Phil Worth and Hermanis will do a great job of explaining the project. It'll, it's up to, would you like them to ask questions, you go, or would you like them to save them for when you're?
I'd encourage you to ask questions, certainly in particular, to make sure that you're understanding the particular points that we're making. So anytime stop us and get us to clarify points that we're making.
Thanks, Hermanis.
Good evening, thank you for having us. My name is Phil Worth.
I'm Hermanis Stein.
And again, we're happy to be here this evening and give you this presentation. There's approximately thirty slides, and I think it will take us about a half an hour. We do expect some, some questions that you'll ask again to kind of clarify information. And then certainly we're available after the presentation for further questions and discussions. We've outlined the presentation now with what you see on your screens here. And we'll, we'll go each, through each of these fairly quickly. And again, the key, I think, is understand the project, how it's being done, what the key features of it are, and how it addresses the community's issues. In a broad overview, that's what we're trying to communicate with you this evening. This is a simple org chart that represents the team that's available to the city in conducting the final design of the project. And you can see quite quickly that it's a very large team meeting, has quite a range of technical expertise available to the city. To address everything from public involvement to environmental, hydraulic, hazardous materials, as well as the civil design and the traffic that are represented to you this evening. So virtually any issue that might come up, I think we're equipped to address on behalf of the city. To cover with you briefly, the background of the project, how did we get to where we're at today? It really starts with your own transportation system plan, which was adopted in 2001. You know that plan quite well, you know there's a long list of projects, and they're categorized by mode. Two of them that are specifically in there, one's referred to as R-1, and the other's R-37. And they relate specifically to planned improvements to the Highway 213 corridor. R-1 is built, it was actually done as a part of the Home Depot development. And essentially what it provided was an additional travel lane southbound on Highway 213 between Washington Street and Redland Road. And that, that new southbound lane ends at Redland as a right turn lane. R-37 is yet to be built, but in fact, the project that's now before us is really the realization of project R-37. Where R-37 came from is in fact, a different planning project and document, and that's your Highway 213 Urban Corridor Design Study. That study ran almost in sync with the city's CSP. And the purpose of that study was to identify long-term strategies for improving the 213 corridor, including a complete reconstruction of the existing interchange of 213 with I-205. So that provides that long-term view, what does the community and the region need for these major facilities, and how do we incrementally or by phases get there? So R-37 is the Phase 1A of that, that build-out scenario of a future interchange with I-205 and Highway 213. The, the concept of Phase 1A has evolved, and the question will, how or why did it evolve? It came in part as a result of the proposed Rivers Project, a development project that was going to be located on the Rossum Landfill. And as that project unfolded and we gained greater understanding as to what, what it is, how big it is, and the scale of its impact on the transportation system, the city and the developer worked closely with ODIN to first investigate different ideas for how you can meet the needs from a transportation perspective, and what solution strategy seemed to make the best sense. So you see listed here, we considered ten different ways in which we could meet the needs of, of the corridor to accommodate this particular development and all of those also proposed here in the city. And ultimately, we came up with this thing that we affectionately refer to as the Jug Handle. And we'll talk a lot about the Jug Handle tonight. The development project, the Rivers, has gone on hold in part because of what's happened with the economy. And you're familiar with that, so I won't, I won't go into any detail this evening about that. And again, just to kind of keep moving along, the next part of the background then is, after we reached agreement that the Jug Handle is a reasonable solution strategy to go forward with, we've gone through a process that's referred to as the Design Acceptance Package, or Design Acceptance Phase. The purpose of this phase, again, this is working with the city and ODIN and other regional partners to define the footprint of the improvement, the right of way that's going to be needed, some of the specific details as to what exactly is going to be done, and what kind of a design life does it have? Will this project serve a twenty-year forecast in, in travel demands in the region? And along the way, the city was successful in securing funding for this project. Now, I'll, I'll give you more detail about the funding, but that's one of the things you see highlighted on, on the slide in bold is, are funds secured for this project? After that, Design Acceptance Package was developed and reviewed by the agencies. The next step in the process was in fact to reach agreement.
Signaling her, but yes, you said the successful funding of the project. And I think one thing that I was kind of concerned about, if, if a specific development that was being planned or had to be presiding, namely the Rivers, the fact that, that is, that is no longer an ongoing project, does that affect the funding?
In this case, it does not. So, and there's a slide a few down in my presentation that will show what funding is available and what the sources are.
Just to reassure you that when we sought, when we run after the funding, we always made it clear that this project is indeed important for our regional center to develop because of the traffic at that location. But it's also critical so that we can meet the traffic needs of the Park Place, Concept Plan area, the Urban Growth Boundaries Expansion Area is a Park Place and a Buick Road. So we've always really tried to point out, it's not just about this development, it's about our regional center and the urban growth boundary.
I knew that's what we were, I just was wondering, at any point in the political process, did it have any effect, and apparently not, that's it.
For the question. The bottom half of the slide talks about this thing called the Local Agency Program. This is a program ODIN oversees that allows, in this case, the local government, the city of Oregon City, to lead and manage this project, which from the city's perspective is certainly a great thing. So you've got more control of this project as a result of that program and these agreements that have come to fruition at this point. The intent is to get the design done and get the project ready for bidding, as you see, by January of 2011. So we're less than a year away, he's the guy that's nervous about this. I'm just the planner, he's the engineer. But that, that's the goal, is to have this in a final design package and ready for bidding by contractors by January of next year. Here's our funding slide. Just real quickly, the big pie, what does it represent? Approximately just under thirty million dollars of funds have been secured, if you will, for this project. And you see how the pie is divided. The biggest piece is, is through the recent Oregon State Legislation that provided funding for transportation improvements. And the city secured twenty-two million through that legislation for the project. And you see two point eight million in federal funds that are available, some funds that have come from Clackamas County, and some funds that have come from, and a specific assessment fee that you established, the city of Oregon City, for the Highway 213 corridor, your own mechanism for accumulating funding primarily from developers that are impacting that corridor incrementally, but nonetheless impacting it. So again, this, this sums to just under thirty million dollars today. Next piece is to actually now start to talk about the, the actual improvements. And, and you're going to see several maps, and I don't like to have to apologize, but I'm going to anyway. Some of these maps are oriented with north, for me at least, to the left. And sometimes the maps are north with, are oriented with north up. And so I'll let you know when north changes directions, to again, try and avoid the confusion that comes along with these things. But what we're trying to simply show you here is first, where is the project? And what you see on the map is, on the left side of the map, you see the I-205 corridor as it comes from the north into the Oregon City area. And we really start very near the interchange with I-205 with the project, at the, what we call the I-205 northbound ramp terminal onto Highway 213. From there on, I do have a pointer, so I'll use this. So we, our project starts at this ramp terminal and continues south along the 213 corridor, all the way to where 213 overcrosses Redland Road. So there's a bridge that 213 has over Redland Road. So that's the limits or the end of the project. Kind of coming back to the beginning then, what we see, and now I'm going to actually advance to the next slide, some of the existing conditions that we deal with along that corridor. And yeah, north just changed directions, sorry, so now north is up. And, and I'll get my arrow back here. So here's our ramp terminal, our northbound ramp terminal with I-205, and now here's the 213 corridor. And we all know that first and foremost, the corridor is congested, both in the morning and in the evening, oftentimes during the midday and on the weekends. We just have a lot of demand that that corridor is serving. It's serving Oregon City residents and residents well south of Oregon City. And part of what we experience during the course of the use of the facility is between that point where we get off from the interchange and we get to the first intersection at Washington Street, there's a lot of what, what I call turbulence. If I'm going south on, on Highway 213, and let's say, for example, I want to turn left. I'm coming south and I want to turn left to go to Clackamas River Drive. Well, depending on what lane I am, when I first get onto 213, I may have to cross one or two lanes simply to get to the left turn lane to be able to turn at the traffic signal. And similarly, I might be coming south and wanting to make a right turn to Washington Street, and I may have to cross one or two travel lanes in order to get into the right turn lane. Well, that crossweed is what we, what you see up on the, on the slide. That creates a lot of turbulence and really reduces the capacity of the facility to move traffic. So that's an inherent problem with what we have out there today. And then again, the basics of, you've got signalized intersections, which by the fact that they're intersections, they take away capacity from what would otherwise be a through facility or an expressway as we typically think of them, like I-205. And then lastly, you have lanes that, that end. I talked with you about the fact that that Home Depot Improvement created a new lane, but only goes to Redland, and that it, that it ends as a right turn drop lane. And if it went further, we could use it better as additional capacity to the corridor. So these are the kinds of existing conditions that we're dealing with. And fundamentally, this system, this aspect of the system, is really operating very close to its capacity. Sometimes it's actually challenged to try and serve more than the capacity that it has to work with. The proposed improvements do quite a number of things. And the, the way to start to understand this is first that we're going to build this thing that we call a Jug Handle. So today, there is a bridge across the Union Pacific Railroad. And what we're proposing to do is introduce a new bridge that would be right adjacent to that UPRR Bridge. And it would allow for a new roadway to be built under Highway 213. That new roadway would connect from Washington Street directly to Clackamas River Drive. And the immediate benefit of that is to start with for pedestrians and bicyclists. They now, to go from Washington Street to Clackamas River Drive, never have to interact with Highway 213 traffic. And they're moving on a completely safe system that includes street bike lanes and very separated sidewalks. So our pedestrians and bicyclists can move back and forth without fear of ever having to cross 213. And that's equally true for motorists, for free vehicles and transit vehicles. So we get this great, great separation of our local system from that regional highway or expressway system. There are a lot more benefits though that come from this. And so as we move south and we get to the Washington Street Clackamas River Drive intersection with Highway 213, the next thing that you realize is the opportunity to change the way that intersection works. If we can, if we can now use this undercrossing of 213 to go back and forth and make other movements as well, we can ultimately simplify this intersection. And by simplifying it, and we'll talk about that in more detail in a little bit, that simplified intersection inherently has more capacity. And so it can continue to operate as a signalized intersection, but with a great deal more capacity than we have today. The last thing I'll, I'll mention in, in kind of this simple graphic is that we, we are in fact going to be providing like continuous three lanes, both southbound and northbound, from the start of our project up at the northbound ramp terminal, all the way through the Redland Road intersection, and coming back together as two, two-lane segments at that Redland Road Bridge over crossing 213. So south of that bridge where we cross Redland Road, we go back to the cross-section that we have today, which is two-lane southbound and two-lane northbound. Very quick description in, in only sketchy detail of what this thing looks like. And the engineer here will talk you through more of those details. The design life, the proven design life, if you will, through the analysis that we've done, is twenty years. So this thing, one, when built, as long as the region grows as anticipated, should service for approximately twenty years. So this thing, when built, as long as the region grows as anticipated, should service for approximately twenty years.
I mean, I don't know the answer, but just so people know that when this was designed, it was designed to meet our current problems, but is also designed to deal with any kinds of development that occurs on the land to area. And that is included in the twenty-year horizon.
That's exactly right. In fact, I'm going to race forward here. I'll come back to these real quickly. But I want to highlight that by using this slide. In the middle of the slide there, you see forecast growth accounts for. And this is the type of thing specifically that it accounts for. The anticipated growth in the Clackamas Community College, anticipated growth at the Red Soils, Clackamas County Campus, your Park Place Concept Plan, the Beavure Creek Road Concept Plan, regional center growth, other growth within Oregon City, and then other growth throughout the region. So this is a pretty extensive and specific kind of growth scenario that's been studied and assumed as a part of what we're trying to serve. We put together this next set of slides to specifically describe for you the way we move today through this system and how those movements change as a result of this project. And so always what you're going to see is, on the left side in the brown, is how the system works for us today, how we make movements on the system today. And then on the right side in the blue, is how you would make the same movements in the future. So starting with southbound movements coming away from I-205, if you wanted to go to Washington Street, you'd simply come to the signal and turn right. And if you wanted to go to the Clackamas River Drive, you'd hit in the left turn lane and turn left. In the future, we would still come southbound, but we would all make a right-hand turn. And we'd come down away from 213 to the intersection with Washington Street. And then we'd choose which direction we're going. Are we going to go onto Washington Street, that's the left, or are we going to turn right and go to Clackamas River Drive? And if we did that, we'd go underneath that new bridge that got built. So that's how southbound movements were going to the north.
I might just want to add, since I did notice that Bob Stein is in our audience, if you were going to go to Stein Oil, because I'm sure this is one of his concerns, is that is what you would do, except rather than continuing Clackamas Drive, say, to Park Place or the river, you just curl around through the roundabout and go to the Stein Oil site.
You come south and you make this right, and you come up to this roundabout, and then turn right and into the Stein Oil site right here.
I just, I was saying, and you need to indicate this on the signaling. Person coming on 213 here, turning right, they're not going to face any signal issues, right? They'll be able to turn right there, but there would be a signal, I presume, on Washington Street. Is that correct?
That is correct. There will be a signal where you see the arrow pointer. So this will be a signalized intersection.
That's the first signal somebody on 213 would encounter.
In fact, there will remain a signal at what we call the Washington Street-213 intersection today, but it's going to be significantly different. All it's really controlling is the through movements and those times where we have to provide a green light for the high demand of right turning traffic from these small side, small in length, side streets. So if we ever get a long queue of vehicles that want to turn right to go south onto 213 from Washington, as an example, there will be occasions where the light will turn green for them, and all through traffic southbound would be stopped.
The people that are on 213 turning right would not, so it could still make this, I mean, they would not be encumbered by the signal?
Right, yes.
So then if they are at Stein Oil, how do they get back on to go southbound on 213?
I'll show you that. So now, now we'll talk about going from this intersection to I-205. And what you see, again, on the left is what we do today. We simply come to the signal and either make a right, in that case from the Stein Oil site, or from Washington Street, we come to the light, wait for the left turn signal, and we get onto 213. In the future, Washington Street traffic will come under 213 via the bridge, up and around, and they'll come here to a right-hand turn lane. And they'll be able to make a right on red, or make a right when the light turns green, in either case. But a very high-capacity movement because it's a right turn, as opposed to that old clunky left turn. And so certainly anyone that happens to be at this particular site, simply come out the driveway, turn right, and off they go to the north. The next slide now deals with traffic from the south. So today, if I'm coming from the south on 213, so if I'm traveling northbound, and I want to go to Washington Street or Clackamas River, it's a left turn at the light or a right turn. In the future, for all of us, it'll be a right turn, which again will be a high-capacity, low-delay movement. And we'll either come to Clackamas River Drive and make a left, or if we're wanting to go to Washington Street, go through the roundabout and come underneath, and off we go. And then the last one is when we want to go to the south from the local area. Today, on Washington Street, we would come to the signal and make a right. In the future, we'll come to the signal and make a right. But for Clackamas River Drive, now you'll come under the overcrossing to this intersection where you'll make a left at the signal. And then again, you'll simply come to 213 and make a right and go south.
I've got a very visceral reaction to these designs right away that I wanted to ask you a question about. And relates to energy consumption. Have you been able to calculate and model the energy consumption as far as gasoline usage and vehicle miles traveled under the current scenario and the jug handle scenario? And some of, most of these existing routes is simply making a right turn or a left turn. On every, almost every scenario that you've shown us so far on the jug handle, people are driving this rather convoluted loop around the jug handle to make what would otherwise be a simple left or right turn. I'm sure there are safety considerations. I'm sure there are, you know, there are issues of where they're, you know, the people are idling at long stop lights, and there's energy consumption in that regard too. But I'm wondering if you've modeled whether this is a net benefit or a net, you know, harm as far as pollution and energy consumption?
There hasn't been specific modeling about energy consumption. So here's what we are able to quantify and then relate to that specific issue. And you began to allude to it yourself, the amount of delay that's experienced. So if we did nothing, if we didn't build a solution, the amount of delay that this system creates for those motorists would be astounding. So significant as to easily make whatever increment of out-of-direction travel and additional energy consumed that's realized through this project to be minuscule by comparison. And again, we don't have, we haven't quantified it by doing the type of energy analysis you're suggesting, but by simply looking at the amount of delay from a no-build to a build, it's readily evident that this substantially reduces the delay, which would reduce energy consumption, reduce emissions, reduce all of the adverse impacts to the environment that would otherwise be concerned. I know I talked through those quickly, and we're happy to come back and talk to them again in more detail, if you like. But I'm going to kind of keep moving because this slide has some things that he wants to share. So we'll trade chairs.
So I'll talk a little bit about the traffic operation analysis that we've completed. And Phil has referred to a lot of this information that I'm going to share, so I'll just highlight a few things. As Nancy also mentioned in the beginning, this is, we're looking twenty, twenty years into the future. So we look at twenty thirty, so basically twenty ten, twenty years from now. So then the reason, then the question is, where do we get these twenty thirty volumes? So we've looked at the regional model that basically reflects an agreement between the state, the county, center cities in this area. And those models usually assume a lot of information, as Phil also referred to. So there's just a little bit of information about the existing households that's there today versus what's anticipated for twenty thirty. So you see there's a significant growth expected in this area, and especially in the city of Oregon City. And then Phil mentioned about just the forecast growth that was built into this model. So when we looked at the twenty thirty models, we looked at all the potential stuff that can happen in the city and in the, on the regional level.
I'm going to interrupt with another question because it's something I have to raise right away. When you say, you're looking at all these growth forecasts, when were these growth forecasts made that you're relying on now? Specifically, were these growth forecasts made prior to the onset of the economic collapse of two thousand and eight? Or are they since the economic collapse in two thousand and eight? Because some economists really are giving us projections that, you know, this paradigm of growth really might not happen anymore.
I'd say that these predate the impact of downturn. And so right now, we would conclude that if that's the case, they may be conservatively high. Instead of reaching these volumes in twenty thirty, maybe it's twenty thirty-five or beyond. For the moment, I'd say that's a nice position to be in, that if anything, we're being conservatively high in the growth forecasts. But it's absolutely consistent with and comes from the regional growth forecast. So there's, you have that sense of assurance that we're being consistent with what the region is doing. Thank you.
We are consistent with the twenty-four year regional center designation also for this area. So basically, whatever people have planned over the years, we're consistent with that when we're looking to the future. Then part of the operation analysis, we look at what's happening at the intersection. So the first part of the slide looks at what's happening today. That's the existing condition. And as you all experience, there's a lot of numbers over here, but, so what it means where we have a B-E-C, so that's the volume-to-capacity ratio, that's just basically how busy that intersection is. And the closer it gets to one, the more trouble we have. So you can see that both those intersections on Highway 213, the Washington Street intersection and Redland Road, it's close to capacity or it's at capacity. So of course, when you have all that friction, the turbulence that Phil mentioned, that results in congestion. And all of us have sudden queues along 213 or on the side streets. So then, with the improvements and looking twenty years into the future, assuming all that, all that anticipated growth, with the improvement, we basically see that we have very similar or even better conditions with all that stuff twenty years from now. So this is a fairly innovative, innovative improvement. The other thing that I also want to mention, which Phil also referred to, today, we have a five-lane facility, so three lanes southbound, two lanes northbound at the Washington intersection. So we're only adding one northbound lane. But because of the operations of the jug handle, we get so much more capacity out of it. If we would have kept the intersection as is today and want to get to the same operations, we have to add more lanes so that cross-section would have become wider and wider. We probably would have ended up with four lanes in each direction. So I think the jug handle configuration keeps an out of a cross-section, which helps a lot. And that's basically where all of us wants to, less pavement and all that.
They hired you for the interstate bridge.
No comment on that. So after we look at the intersections, we look at what's happening between the intersections. And as Phil alluded, there's a lot of friction happening. And you come down from I-205 to Washington Street. If you look at that little schematic layout on the top of the slide, so this is I-205 ramp terminal intersection. So today, you make a right turn and you go straight through. And if you basically want to make a left at Washington Street to go to Clackamas River Drive, you have to try to find a gap in that lane and another lane, and then go into the left turn lane. And you don't have a lot of space there, a lot of distance to make that maneuver. So although we're maintaining three lanes in the future configuration, but what the jug handle has all described, we're not making a left anymore. So that left in future is not there anymore. So that left just becomes a right turn lane. So now these guys that used to make and try to get across all those lanes basically stays in this lane and goes into the right turn lane. So that really reduces that friction and the turbulence. Still have this one merge effect from people coming from that double loop ramp from the I-205. If they want to go to Washington or want to go to Clackamas River Drive, they basically just have one movement and they try to find a gap in that lane. But that's much easier when they're moving on. And again, it's not that you're adding through lanes, it's just how you manipulate some of the turning movements. The northbound direction, again, because we're adding another lane, we of course add a lot of capacity in the northbound direction. Phil has also referred to those two intersections on the new realignment, which connects Washington on the west side and Clackamas River Drive on the east side of 213. So you basically see on the right-hand side of the slide, that's a single lane roundabout. So, and...
This is the, what you see on the right there, that would be the roundabout near the Stein Oil site at the intersection with Clackamas River Drive.
Because you hit that point right now. I'm kind of curious of how access to the Stein Oil will be, will be off the roundabout, which I presume it won't be, but is it? You know, I have a hard time seeing how it might function in terms of getting into the access to and from, depending on which direction you're going. Do you have any idea at this point?
The access to Stein Oil property is remaining. There's two accesses out that will stay. It's just when you, remember all the, all the circulation slides we've gone through, there's always, it's just where people are coming from and going to. But people will always drive past, basically pass this facility. In some cases, where people used to make a left previously away from it, they will actually be driving past this site. So there might be more people past this roundabout, which will help in this case, especially with the type of facility it has.
And at this point, we're not changing, we have to reshape his north driveway a bit because of the slopes there, but the two driveways will remain in place. And to the roundabout, we started with a T-intersection configuration there. And we anticipated that before too long, with a stop sign, we anticipated that before too long, there'd be enough traffic to require a traffic signal. And we thought it'd be much better foresight to go ahead and build a roundabout, which will operate better than having a traffic signal there, and certainly better than a stop sign.
Roundabout?
So just to put the left-hand, the left-hand picture in perspective, I'll just quickly go back a few slides. So if you look at the right picture, so this is this intersection. Basically, coming south on I-205, you make a, on 213, you make a right, and then you get to this next intersection. And so this is the Metro, the Metro property. That's the little T-intersection that we are going to discuss. What we've shown today is underneath the sketch I made is a signalized intersection. So again, in this case, the signalized intersection basically will have a five-lane cross-section. So what that means is there's basically two lanes in each direction on Washington Street with a left turn lane. So the question was asked, well, what about a roundabout? Because we have a roundabout on the other side, and there are benefits on the roundabout. So we did a quick assessment on how a roundabout would look like. And I can talk about roundabouts a lot. I love roundabouts, but I won't. The big idea, the point to communicate over here, if you look at this area with the blue is basically representing sidewalks or a multi, accommodating bikes and entities. And you look at this edge of the black lines underneath it, that's the proposed edge of pavement. So there's a lot of extra property that we'll have to take if we consider a roundabout at this location. But the current operations of Metro Roundabout wasn't really a feasible option at this location. We'll have to wait another few years for a multi-lane roundabout. Just a few things about the environment and any technical aspects. As Nancy also mentioned in the beginning, we have a fairly big, multidisciplined project team, and we're here to address everything that might come up, everything that people might consider. So there's a lot of coordination happening with a lot of the environmental agencies out there. There's a whole list of them. You can read them. We will address everything that might come our way. We have the people that can do it. So the overall goal is to avoid these environmental impacts, and then at the same time, if there's opportunities, to improve these conditions as well. So if there's any impact, we will be mitigated. I mean, there's a lot of rules, regulations. I mean, there's a lot of rules, regulations, we will address all those types of things. At the same time, when we do touch those areas, we basically will look for opportunities to try to improve those, in this case, stream and protect the groundwater levels and all that kind of stuff. That's really, I think it's a nice opportunity we have and the city has to address some areas where it might have been concerned for many years, so it really helps for this project coming along. And the last bullet as well is, we all know there was a big flood in ninety-six. So of course, the design will look at that impact as well and will design accordingly. And of course, we've talked about, a lot about the landfill, the development on the landfill, but that landfill also threads under the existing road facilities. So that's why we also have few technical engineers on our team that's doing a lot of investigations currently. And constructing a landfill area, it raises a lot of questions about stability, settlement and all that kind of stuff. So from a design point of view, when we look at structures, retaining walls, foundations or signal poles, all that kind of stuff, it will be designed accordingly. So there will be a lot of special designs in this project, so, but we're excited, we have a team that can look at that. And then, of course, there's a lot of other investigations. Another one to highlight is the hazardous materials investigation. Again, with the landfill material, you might have seen in the last couple of weeks, there's been a lot of borings going on. They're really drilling down to see how deep this landfill area is, when actually what type of material there is, when they get to natural ground, solid ground. And it's amazing how deep it is in some locations, I won't bore you with the details. But what we want to do is with this all, we want to have that knowledge and then design accordingly. So we'll prepare the plans to, in some places, maintain what we have or improve, improve the landfill seal we have on it, because I mean, you don't really want to touch that garbage because it opens up a lot of stuff. And then in some cases where we do have these foundations for these structures, we will get the necessary plans and permits to remove that material and of course, provide the appropriate foundation designs for those structures. And you'll probably want to know what's happening when we're building this project, so that will be interesting. So we have looked at numerous, numerous options, and I won't go through all of them, but I'll highlight two of them. The one is stage construction before the closure. So what do we mean by stage construction? So stage construction, you've probably all driven through construction areas, is when you keep the people on that roadway. So you try to move the traffic to one side of the road and you build one piece, and then you move it to the other side and you build another piece. And you basically shift traffic around, in some cases, you have to split the traffic when you're building the model. So it just takes, that takes space. And especially with, on highway facilities, in this case, an expressway, the mobility industry, the freight community, of the freight industry, they have concerns about that as well. So I know Nancy and Rick and I, we went down to the freight industry meeting, was it about two weeks ago? And we presented this as well. Keeping everybody we can think of involved with this and just try to get everybody's input. But for the stage construction is, unfortunately, if we go that option, we have to close some of the existing lanes. So just think on what you're experiencing today during peak hours. And then, when you take a lane away, that will, it will be some, there will be some challenging moments. Throughout, I mean, it will be closed in the night, the day, the weekday, weekend, so it will be a twenty-four hour period.
Is this going to be co-terminous with the closure of the Arch Bridge? That'll create a nightmare.
Taking that into account.
We're taking that into account, yes.
Can I ask how you're taking it into account?
So I'll get to that because there's all public outreach that's also happening parallel with everything. And we're talking, we're looking at all the projects in this area and the coordination between the different projects. We're tracking everybody, so it is taken into account.
If I might ask the question, since we're at that point, we got, of course, we got access on the two thirteen off of McLaughlin as well. Are things there in terms of signalization timing or anything else? Of course, those are on and off res and so forth, but is there going to be anything done there to facilitate more traffic as likely to get on McLaughlin in order to, in order to get onto two thirteen, uh, onto two oh five?
I'll briefly talk about that.
Okay.
So the stage construction, so the other option we looked at was the four day closure. So what does that mean? That means the Highway two thirteen will be closed for four days, that's what we're planning. So what that means is that the overall construction period of the whole project is shortened by six, five minus months. And we don't have to close any existing lanes during the day, during the peak hours, basically. So that's a huge benefit. But we all know, and that's our, our briefly touch on that, is the four day closure, what's going to happen with the traffic? And if you just think about if you close a pipe, that water wants to go somewhere there and somewhere you need to pick a pipe. And unfortunately, in this area, we don't have a lot of bigger pipes around to take the extra water. But there are ways, and we've done a lot of research on a national level, to see what other states has done to look at these type of facilities. So... The big success of the four day closure, which at this stage, that is the preferred option that everybody is looking at, is the public outreach. We've coordinated with other states that has closed big facilities and what they anticipated, all this modeling they've done, it worked better because people are avoiding that area for their timeframe. So what's critical and where the project team really wants to be proactive is the timing of the closure. We're going to talk to a lot of folks to figure out what would be the best time to do something like that. And also, we provide advance notice, because if everyone can plan around it, that will also be, also be better. So during, with the preparation of the traffic control during construction, we will look at regional alternative routes and also a briefing about that, and also local deators. And of course, we'll need to look at maneuvers at intersections and also see what other secondary roadways there are.
I did that advanced notice is not, is not something on our website. I mean, this is a full-blown public ad campaign on the radio, on the television, so people know that that route is closed for four days. Many people avoid it altogether, it's better to avoid it for four days than to end up avoiding it for more than that because you don't know what it's going to be like. And you may remember the I eighty-four closures a couple summers ago when they had to repay the entirety of I four oh five as well this summer, this past summer. There were closures, one directional closures, but even ODOT has done it and it's something that, at this point, the state is offering.
I remember best is when we closed the I five bridge between Oregon and Washington to fix it. And it was a major closure and they anticipated it to go on for weeks. And the contractor was able to shorten that substantially. Everyone feared that, you know, the region was going to come to a agreement, screeching all. Fortunately, it didn't, and we learned lessons for why it didn't and we're definitely going to apply them here.
There's no doubt, it'll be fairly chaotic in Oregon City. And we're trying to think about how can we make it fun? Throw you a bubble gum, I don't know, we've got, you know, but the idea is...
Give County an extra holiday, give Clackamas Community College two holidays.
Idea is to make people know where this is.
So I will, I have a few slides about the public involvement, things we've been thought, we've thought about at this stage. But I mean, we're also here today is to get some feedback from everybody. Of course, we want to address everybody's concern. So the picture on the left hand side shows regional alternative routes, so that's very, very, very small. So this is I five on the left hand side of that little picture, I two oh five coming across. And then you have two twenty-four going way out there, you have ninety ninety and then two thirteen in the middle. So if you take that little link out, it's not, it's a lot of out of direction stuff, so. So we will do, we will look at these things. And we will look at a lot of variable message signs, so those big signs that has electronics words, we'll work with ODOT to provide appropriate messages to communicate this information in advance during their closure. There's a lot of information that will happen. But if people do decide to come to this area, we do have local deators. So the one that's under consideration at this stage is, again, this is two thirteen, so this is on the map on the right hand side. So two thirteen is basically this roadway facility over here. And then this is Washington, and it comes down, it gets to Abernathy over here, and then it comes into downtown. And then Fourteenth Street Avenue is over there, and then this is McLaughlin, ninety ninety is running over here. So the shortest route at this stage is to travel, basically follow Washington and get to Fourteenth. That's the shortest deator we have. And as we mentioned before, and with the Highway forty-three bridge closed, there's not a lot of room on these facilities. I mean, it's not, you can't take this today, four, five lane facility of two thirteen and put everybody in a two lane facility, it's not possible. But, and that's why it's critical to look at the public outreach associated with this project. So again, we don't want any surprises along the way. And we will provide information in many settings and many formats, many venues at many times. So there will be, the communication will be the key to the success of a four day closure. And there's, basically at this stage, we have identified three focus areas and I'll briefly highlight a few items of those. So the stakeholder outreach, there will be briefings with businesses and again, the freight industry, community groups. If you have any suggestions, we will welcome those as well. There will be one-on-one visits with the people mostly affected by these. And that's why if you have any questions, Doc has already started making lists and all that kind of stuff. So again, if you have any suggestions, we will welcome those. There will be open house events with settings where we'll communicate project updates on a regular basis. And then when, during construction itself, we are considering like a telephone hotline, it won't be my cellphone, but we will, we will definitely look at those types of things. And as I mentioned before, signage, we'll try to communicate this information in a lot of ways. We were thinking of information kiosks at high traffic locations like the college, downtown areas where there's a lot of pedestrian movement, that's kiosk, just try to spread the word. I've mentioned the variable message signs, there's big signs across the, usually on the freeways, we'll provide message. And then during construction itself, there's a lot of orange signs, of black letters, but we also have what we call these portable changeable message signs. So there's also, you've seen a lot of those next to the road that has words. And again, we'll use that to communicate information. As Nancy also previously mentioned, it will go out in whatever way we can find, and that would be the radio, the TV, newspapers, newsletters. We're also working with the city to have a fairly active website, on the city website, that will be linked with ODOT's website. So we will look at all opportunities to spread the word as possibly can. And just a brief overview about the project schedule at this stage. We started the beginning of this year, as Phil mentioned, the design acceptance practice. We have all these acronyms and word phrases, but that was basically to set the footprint of the improvements. Basically, through the summer, we will design that into way more detail. And so a ninety-five percent of the model, what that means in July, which is just a few months from now, is that will sort out most of the details. And then there will be some refinements, we will have a final set of documents in October that will hopefully go for, but in January.
What does P S N E stand for again?
Stand specifications and estimates. So sorry for the acronym, but it's engineering terms. So it's basically, we will have a lot of plans, construction plans, and specifications telling the contractor what to do and what not to do and based on national standards, and then we'll have an estimate that basically says this is based on this, this is what we think it is. And then when the bits come in, we'll compare the prices the contractors are giving us with the engineering.
Are you kind of cleaning it, design builder? Oh, no, this is the design, okay.
Right, and that's, we are trying to advertise it in January. And there's still a lot of discussion going on about the construction period. It's just when do you start, it's the summer days, unfortunately, we have a winter here in Oregon, so we can't go through the winter. But there's other stuff we can do, so it, everything depends on how you do work out your schedule or what to allow your projects to actually do proceed with stuff through the winter. And so just, again, we are here to ask for more information from you guys. Input, feedback, it's really, we will welcome all those. We will provide regular updates through our public outreach, and you'll probably see more from Doc as well, or you'll hear from him. So again, any neighborhood associates, anything you know, please forward those to us. We will definitely be back to provide more details, so. Ready to run the marathon. So if you guys have any, any questions or comments.
Question either.
It's really must we make clear to the public, we're not doing anything with the rest of two oh five. And that the result is that there's still going to be delays getting on two oh five depending on what the, what the amount of traffic is. I can understand things are going to move more smoothly, but this is really a capacity thing and it's not so much dealing with the two oh five exchange issue. But I am sorry, so people can't necessarily assume they're going to get on, well, they're probably going to be able for a while to get on two oh five faster for various reasons. Being the traffic on the Washington wants to be on Washington and so forth, but it's still, that's still a major bottleneck that something has to be done, it's going to cost a lot more than what we're talking about here.
We are not improving or adding capacity to I two oh five. Do you see that?
Things I want to add on about, first, who owns this project at this point? And what I mean by that is originally, my collection is this commission was going to fund that project either directly or by backfilling the developer of the river, who was going to do the road improvements. The Urban Renewal Commission is not funding this project, so I guess my question is, you gave some, you know, funding like on the HP two thousand and one. But because the state is funding it through, mostly through HP two thousand and one funds, who owns the project right now? Who's calling the shots on everything as it relates to this project?
Well, oh, this is an ODOT facility, and so we are following ODOT design standards. And we are the project manager through our intergovernmental agreement with ODOT, but ultimately, ODOT will own the facility, they own the facility. Now, the road, the Washington Street, under, the undercrossing below two thirteen, that will be owned by the city. That will still remain a local street. And then the two jug handle west and jug handle east, at this point, we haven't finalized the jurisdiction over the jug handles.
And so there was a slide about who the team was, you had a lot of consultants. How did, how did that team get selected, where there is a series of RFQs and RFPs and slowly everything got? And who made those decisions? Who made the selection?
Actually, the city's project team, it's pretty much me and Alita, but, and then we worked with ODOT to select the project team.
Okay, thank you. Second question I had is, you made some reference in the slides to environmental issues. There were no detailed drawings about some of the environmental issues. And I'm wondering at what stage those efforts are in as far as what you're planning to do, what the impacts will be, how you're planning to address those impacts.
There are ongoing reports, I don't know if Rick wants to give an update, but I believe it was a... About just, there's some preliminary maps that's been drawn up, but to be honest, I need to refer to Rick when those report. There's ongoing studies now, I know that.
Right, and I can say that we've done all the wetland delineations and the identifying water courses. And we've calculated impacts on the flood plain, do you have anything to add, Rick, on that? Use the microphone if you're going to say anything. Use the microphone if you're going to say anything.
Some of the reports will, haven't started yet, but will soon. We'll get archaeological, historical research underway soon.
Hazmat's being addressed.
We've done a phase one hazmat study where they look at the records and determine if there's any hazmat concerns, which some have been identified. And the phase two study will start soon too. That's where they'll go out and determine, will determine where further investigations have to be done. Some of the boring that you've seen, they have taken the samples to determine if we have any hazmat issues at some of those boring sites. So some of that work is underway. The geotechnical reports will, will begin soon. The evaluation, the boring's been completed, so the reports will, or the evaluation will start soon.
Then I want that background, it's because I want to raise something I, I raised months ago, when Ms. Josh Howard had, you know, given us some preliminary discussions of this project. We had been given a drawing that showed, in sketch terms, the volumes of earth that needed to be excavated in order to do some of the fill elsewhere for the project to achieve the cut fill balancing requirements. I raised an idea, and I raised it elsewhere, that, that gave us an opportunity, basically because the cuts were going to come from, according to this sketch, from the area along I-205, south of 213, and in between I-205 and the Union Pacific Railroad track, which is a kind of a no man's land right there. But that whole area, as most people know, was historically a very large bottomlands, wetlands area, confluence of clodges and Atlantic rivers. And I wanted to suggest, and I still want to suggest, that this gives us an opportunity to do some reclamation in both removing garbage, fill, like sawdust residue from a sawmill that used to be there, and using that whole area as a, as a kind of an amenity to, for example, treat the stormwater off of I-205. I know that ODOT has recently settled a lawsuit where they have committed $10 million to construct roadside highway water quality facilities and other types of issues, or facilities across the state to deal with roadside runoff. So I, I think that's an opportunity, and I would want to suggest that that be considered for integration into this project as a whole, because if they're going to excavate to get the fill, why just leave a hole there? Why not do something, you know, nice from a landscape opportunity that I think this presents?
I, I'd be glad, we'd like it to mention that, but we are looking at that. We've developed some concept plans and will submit it to the community development department as part of our mitigation for impacts to the N-Rod and the floodplain.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me, I was also interested in environmental mitigation that might occur. Is this a, Commissioner Neely and I attended a, and, and a climate change workshop, and we're, that made us more aware, I think, of the need to do mitigation. So are there any innovative environmental mitigation, climate change techniques that you've built into this, or, I don't just say doing, I think Green Streets probably isn't a, is an option there, but are there any other things that are kind of cutting edge? Because I know ODOT's a little bit more open to that.
I think the, the design itself actually is, even though we designed it before we went to conference, it's always been, as you know, we, as the three of us, always had a common interest there in thinking about how we can do things with positive impacts and smaller footprints. I think one of the largest gains we get from this is constructing an improvement that has such high efficiency for the motor vehicle and such a small footprint on the landscape itself. So we're, we're, we've selected an op, option that has far less impervious area, and so that's, that's enough said about that. And then we're treating stormwater, we, actually, there's regulations in place now, so we, it's not even innovative, but all of the stormwater that comes off of the project will be treated. And so we could still call it innovative and green, but it is required as well. And then I think the opportunity we have, as Commissioner Nacita was mentioning, is to turn that area between I-205 and the railroad tracks, the portion of it, to take advantage of that excavation for the floodplain cut and fill, and really try to turn it into something a green amenity. Whether or not we can recreate any kind of a wetland there is yet to be seen, but that's something that our environmental, our, our wetlands consultant, Mason Bruce Gerard, they're working on that, and we have a landscape architect selecting the species of vegetation that goes in there, making sure that there is a maintenance program so we can get it all started and that them bases just don't take over again. So these are, these are the attractive parts of the project that I think makes it stand out more than just if we were to, you know, put in a few extra lanes at that intersection, and it would be good for 15 years.
Should the landscape architect?
Greenworks.
Okay. Glad to hear that, and I'm really glad to pursue the, you know, that excavation wetland idea. My, my other question, or my other comment, I guess, was on the public interaction, are you considering social media at all, and, and use of telephone?
You can use your Twitter account.
Unfortunately, I'm sorry, I'll no longer be mayor, so.
Well, whoever is then.
Pass that on.
Right. Or do you have a Facebook?
Sure.
Yes, we should definitely. I mean, Doug then is really the expert on the public outreach, and all of those kinds of media are ones that we will be utilizing.
Right.
Mr. West?
That was exactly what I was going to say, talk about the Facebook and social media. These are, you know, short-term announcements or quick happening things, the perfect kind of announcements to have on Facebook.
All become your friends.
Good. Then you'll all be up to date.
Commissioner Neely?
I want to do one of the follow-up, and something else to follow-up on, Commissioner Nacita, in terms of that wetland area. Several years ago, I went to collect vertivus and invert vertivus from water bodies to make a presentation at the Shoredens Museum, and we had one. And I went, there's a wetland that's located between 205, currently 205 and 213. Now, there's cottonwoods growing there, but as far as I could tell, it was a dead zone. There was almost no aquatic life in that wetland whatsoever. I'm going to assume it's because of the material that's left there from the Stimson operations that maybe stuff is leaching into the water, or something of that nature. But I would suggest actually you do some monitoring of that wetland, if you're bigger ethic material from that area and the part of the cut and fill, so that we can see whether in fact the wetland conditions improve by whatever we're doing at that particular location. The other thing I want to make a comment on, the real focus, of course, as I understand, is a jug handle. You do indicate the widening of the access off of Redland Road and, and Holcombe into, onto 205. And I don't want you to spend a whole lot more time, because we have another item that was supposed to eat before city condition meeting. But in any case, I, I would like to spend just a little bit of time on the Redland-Holcombe piece. One, one point of interest, let me just introduce it. With this jug handle, we're almost functioning as an expressway from 205 all the way up to Beaver Creek, with the exception of the Holcombe-Redland connection. And it, it'd be nice if that's, at some point becomes a smooth operating intersection itself. So I don't know if you're going to give us a start in that direction, but I would like to take a few moments off.
Fortunately, at the Highway 2 and the Redland intersection, we haven't looked at more free flow conditions, but we do, Redland Road, we do some minor widening, but we're not adding a lane. And the reason for that is that if you look at, today, coming from Highway 213, there are two lanes leaving the intersection on its way to Abernathy roadway. But there's only single lanes from Highway 213 turning it, there's only a southbound right turn that basically coming down, you make a right turn onto Redland. So you only retreat, it requires one lane, and then northbound, you want to make a left at the signal into Redland, there's only one lane as well. So you don't need two lanes. So what we're going to do is re-stripe it. So we have one lane leaving the intersection, and then, and then basically going towards the intersection, you have three lanes. So there will be two left turn lanes. Everybody, especially in the morning pick hours, wants to go north to I-205, they will have two separate lanes. And then there will be a separate right turn lane, so people that wants to make a right going south on 213, they will have a separate lane. So it's not that we're changing that much about the, the number of lanes on that piece of Redland Road, but we're basically re-stripping it. But at the same time, Redland Road is an ODOT facility, so when this project came along, there was an opportunity to address some of their standards, without width. So that's why they're showing a little bit of widening along the Redland Road. But it's more a re-stripping exercise than physically widening it, adding another lane.
One thing, and I kind of, and I know you're not doing this, but I commented on earlier, one of the big restrictions of going on, 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 onto the ramp to get onto 205 is currently anybody that actually wants to go south on 213, that wants to go towards Oregon City as opposed to the Portland Metro area, is backed up. Now, I understand that you're, I, I think an earlier plan I saw, this showed that you're having some lane capacity there for a, a right turn to go into Oregon City. I'm talking about the ramp that goes up from Redland-Holcombe, that, that ramp that goes onto 213.
I, I'm going to describe again the features that come to this intersection as a result of the improvement. And let's start with 213 itself. So in the southbound direction, what we're going to gain is first, three through lanes southbound through the intersection, and we're going to recreate what is a dedicated right turn lane. Again, today, what we got are two through lanes and a, and a, what we call a drop lane. The third lane that's on 213 southbound is forced to make the right turn to Redland. That, that lane will now be a third through lane and a new southbound right turn lane.
Correct. What I was talking about is actually the person coming onto 213 up that ramp. And it, it, currently, you're backed up against, if you want to go, if you want, if you want to go south on 213 off that ramp, you're backed up against people that are turning left onto 213. And the, my understanding was that we were actually going to have a segment, a, an additional lane segment for a right turn off of there.
Yes. And that's correct. So with the re-stripping is, today, there's only two lanes approaching the intersection.
Right.
And the left ends are blocking the right ends. So there will be three lanes approaching the intersection, two of them the left and the right end. So the right ends will be able to pass the left end queue.
Right. Now, what I was going to say, what would make me really happy, is, and I don't know if you can do it, is to have that re-stripping extend all the way down the ramp, so that somebody that's coming off of Redland can get into that right turn lane and go directly all the way up there. And now is that the case? So you're going to have, you're going to have that three lane re-stripping.
It's, it's basically two lanes from there. I mean, the lane configuration at the Abernathy roadway stays the same. I think there's, there's two lanes approaching 213. So the outside lane will overcome the right turn lane, and the leftmost lane will feed the two left turn lanes.
Oh, okay. So people will be able to return directly from Redland Road into that right turn lane and go all the way up to 213. Right. Okay.
Great.
I'm happy.
It's real good.
Yeah, that's real good.
There's, there's actually another phase to this whole project that we don't have construction planning for yet, and that is being additional.
Yeah, short and sweet, four day closure, can that include a weekend?
At this stage, that's what we're thinking of, but I'm sure, Doug, as you talk to people, there might be a few other suggestions that we want to consider, but maybe it will be a nice long weekend for people to.
All right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Chair Walters and commission members, just briefly, this is, I want to summarize this, this topic tonight. It's the Development Opportunity Study. This is something I mentioned earlier. This is a grant that we received from Metro for $35,000 to take a look at two sites that the city owns, one on 10th and Main and one on 12th and Main, to go ahead and, and do some market analysis and some design alternatives for the sites. And the purpose of the meeting today is just to kick off, we have a consultants here, and I'll introduce those in just a second, but, but the reason for the meeting is to kick off the study to make sure that we're on the right track. And the contract, which is enclosed in your packet, outlines this kickoff meeting, and then this is a final presentation, probably sometime in May. So this is really a, a good time for your input into the project. And, and the other thing I wanted to mention is that tonight you'll see several design options for both sites, and really, the purpose of the design options is not to select one tonight, but just to get us thinking about, you know, what's possible for these sites. And if the design options look good, then the consultants will do a little more market analysis to see if it's really feasible to be, to be supported in, in our real estate market. So, and I also wanted to mention that White Purdy's been helping me on this project and has said some helpful input, and Lisa Miles and Megan Gibbs are here from Metro, they're the folks that manage this process, this program. And with that, I want to ask Nancy Gato and Mike Corle to come forward. They're, they are the consultants that are going to be working on this project. Nancy is with Urban Land Economics and has done a lot of market studies in, in different parts of Portland, both on Alberta Street and Mississippi, and also for the city of Milwaukee, as well as several places in California. And Mike Corle is an architect that's worked on a lot of these smaller infill projects like the one we're talking about here in Oregon City, of the two to three story range and the, and the, you know, half or a quarter back block site. So with that, I'll turn it over to our consultants.
My name's Nancy Gato. I'm very pleased to have the opportunity to bring our team this evening to discuss with you some of our preliminary work. As you know, we have two sites that we're working on, one of them at 12th and Main, and the other is a smaller site at 10th and Main. And our charge is to come up with market analysis, that's my, one of my jobs, for long-term development of these sites, and also to develop alternative development schemes and to select one eventually for more detailed financial feasibility analysis. And so later on, Mike Corle will go over the development programs that we've been working on. But I first wanted to just kind of set the stage a little bit to discuss what we see as the, the market and economic context for these, both of these projects, and to describe some of the issues that, that go into our thinking in developing the various development scenarios. Now, this chart we put Now, this chart we put together discusses a number of these issues. Um, but I'd like really to, to tell you that we're really enthusiastic about downtown Oregon City for a number of reasons. You have a, a character and integrity of your main street that I know many cities would kill for, and I'm serious about that. It's got a continuity, it's both sides of the streets. It's got an inventory of historic buildings that is very sought out in the market and is a, a very strong asset for you. And I'll, I'll touch it up on this as, as we proceed. Certainly, the setting is extraordinary. I don't have to describe that to you. But this is an important issue in terms of attractiveness for different kinds of redevelopment. Also, that, the downtown buildings that you have provide the opportunity for incremental redevelopment, which is a very important stepping stone when you move then into new construction, which is what we're talking about for our subject, sites. Because, but new development requires a rent structure to support new construction that is significantly higher than the rent that will support existing buildings. And if you have an inventory of historical buildings that are attractive that are of the scale that you have here, it provides an opportunity for owners or developers to make improvements, either small improvements to the sods or gutting space or, you know, there's a range. But what that does is it provides these stepping stones of rent increases, greater value in the buildings that sets the stage for ultimately having a financially feasible new construction project. So the fact that you have a significant inventory of existing buildings is very much in your favor. And also, you know, people like historical buildings. That's been shown in many other areas, many other cities, many other neighborhoods. Now, in talking about the context for the, the three main uses that we've been considering for these two sites, we have commercial office, retail, and multifamily housing. Now, you have, oddly enough, even in this really terrible commercial office market, you have a very, a relatively strong existing base because of the courthouse and the legal industry here. And that's not only supports office space, but is a very strong supporter of retail space, particularly restaurants. And in terms of new office development, various, there are no Class A buildings in downtown now. Class A is multi-story, new construction, elevators. There aren't any right now. And you primarily have Class C buildings. And in the future, the outlook, I think, is, is mixed. And one of the issues has to do with the potential relocation of the courthouse, which in the short term would, would require that there be re-tenanting. And, and because that is a strong part of your economic base currently downtown. And also, in the medium term, there's very significant vacancy factors in office space everywhere. And I think it will be a while before there is major new office development. That does not mean that any particular site is impossible for there to be new office development because every location is unique. And certainly, in, in these sites, there is, there's a lot to offer office development. And, but it's not full, full steam ahead in the next five to 10 years because there is significant inventory to be absorbed. Now, in terms of retail development, retail is, in my opinion, for the most part, secondary use that is supported by employment or by residential development. And in this case, you, because there really isn't any housing in the core downtown area, the retail is, is supported by the office users. There's also just general population to come downtown to eat and to shop. And I think that in the longer term, the retail downtown will be complementary to any significant new retail, retail development in your Rivers site, the landfill. I, I think that, that recapturing the retail spending on the Rivers project or whatever is the format there, those, those dollars are probably going to Cracken's Town Center and other places. To draw them back into the city, into the site that is relatively close to downtown, I think is a, is a strong positive for future redevelopment opportunities downtown.
Sorry, I know we didn't allow you a lot of time.
Yes, I know. Yeah, we need to...
Move along.
Move along as quickly as we can. Okay, thank you. And I just wanted to mention in terms of multifamily housing, that's both apartments and condos. There really isn't any downtown now. And I think that it's unlikely that there will be condos in the short term. Generally, that follows apartment development first. And I think that it would be important to encourage, even at the smallest level, apartment redevelopment downtown, to set the stage so that a lender in the future will see, yes, people do live downtown. Okay, so now I'd like to introduce the other members of our team, Mike Coral and Ryan Austin, who are going to be presenting the graphics of the redevelopment alternatives that we're discussing. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Coral from Bellashere Coral Architects. And we've been asked by Metro and Oregon City to look at a few sites within the city. I believe you have received a handout that was sent to you this week, and you've reviewed it. So you're familiar with the two sites. Unfortunately, we don't have those overview sites right now. But what we'd like to do is just run you through it quickly, because we don't have much time, about how we kind of approach the site. I guess the, the first site that we all know is on 12th Avenue there, and I guess 12th and Main. And what we have essentially done, have talked with as many scenarios as we possibly can think of, is how we can use this site for different housing types or retail buildings or whatever. So basically, these are reviews that we've done where we've delineated some requirements, such as parking, retail space, commercial space, and housing to conform to the sites that we've been asked to look at. As you can see on the first, to the left, we have the parking skiing levels. We have four of those, and we've selected three to work with. At this scale, they're, they're pretty small. But what we'd like to mention is that most of the retail and the parking entrance points along this particular site are entered from the Main Street site, which is on the western side of the site. We came up with, we've come up with these various configurations, those being retail on the corner, also full parking, and then retail on the southeast corner of the site. The next level, then, we move to the half-block schemes, where we, we move up to the next, essentially, these are the combining of the, all of the levels of the building. And this would be the on-grade level, then the next level above that, which is the second one. And then the upper floors then would be the one to, the furthest to the right. And then the final selection we have is the fi, the full block. We were asked to look at the full block with the QFC site. I can't see, excuse me. And we were asked to take a look at that and see if we could integrate that as, as some future reference. So this is how we came up with these different configurations. From that, we then moved and did the same thing. Well, we, we picked, I believe, a total of five. And so what we've done is we've given it some dimensions, and we actually start to then quantify the actual spaces that you could, we could use on this site, taking advantage of views and also ways to enter the building and to provide circulation through the building. This particular scheme, we have selected the retail at the ground level on the corner. We, usually, we'd like to have the retail on the corner because that helps reinforce the Main Street of the city, reinforcing the intersection and bringing the, the parking in on the southeast corner in an L-shaped pattern with a lobby then in the middle for the entrance to the housing above. The level two then is self-explanatory. Level two is problematic in that we have McLaughlin Boulevard, which is a bit, a bit strong for housing to be located on that level. So therefore, we looked at using other uses, such as office or other retail on that level with a backup of housing behind that facing Main Street. And then the final one is the block of housing where we have it. It lives in, and basically is on a north-south axis. So the scheme, essentially, the difference in this scheme is we bring parking in on the McLaughlin Boulevard level. It would be adjacent to the office space. It would be ramping in from the McLaughlin level. We have, again, housing above that. Scheme has a donut scheme, or essentially, we do a perimeter-type housing with single-loaded corridor surrounding the whole site with an open space to a roof below. And we have an office, office level and housing again on the second level. This being our maximum scheme, this is where we have the more traditional U-shaped scheme, where we have the entrance coming in from the McLaughlin level, the second level, with retail and parking below. And then this is the one scheme where we decided to encompass the KFC site by creating a large U-shaped plan with a extension of the housing over to the QFC site and extending also parking and retail. Now, we're moving on to the 10th and Main site, which we found to be somewhat problematic for housing in that we have the train. It's a bit loud. We felt it was a bit too loud for the idea of putting housing there. We felt it'd just be a little too strong for somebody to live there unless you had some hearing difficulties. So we decided... So we, we decided to limit it to house, to, excuse me, to office and to retail. And the first scheme is really a reinforcement of what your downtown really is. And that is the two-story retail, or, excuse me, first-floor retail with professional offices above. And so we replicated that and kept the parking on the backside of the lot, adjacent to the railroad area. The next scheme then is where we take that same footprint for two stories and go to the maximum allowed by the zoning, and that is 58 feet by the tallest building in your downtown. And so what we've done is we've maxed that out to give you an idea of just how tall you can go in your particular location here. And the final one is the full bore, cover the parking, and stretch it over the whole site where we have offices with retail on the first floor again, and parking in the back. Those are the, the different schemes we've come up with for our first schematic review. And this is why we're here. We'd like to talk to you about that and get your input on it. Anybody have any input?
I'm good.
Well, heading to your first scheme, I mean, on the 12th and Main, I always thought it would be nice to have parking at both the Main Street and the McLaughlin levels. And that seems to be the assumed way to do that. You don't, and most I'm missing some, you don't appear to have a built-out structure at the third level over the parking. Is that correct?
Yes, we don't at this point have any structure over that.
Would there be any reason that that could not be done?
No, one could very easily do that. That would be, I believe, the next scheme, which is more of a U-type. You could do that over the parking, yes.
Okay, over both levels of parking.
Okay, thank you. We, we weren't sure parking was, the issue is parking, once you build a structure, parking does become, becomes very expensive to do. And we just don't know if your city is really, if the developer would go for that. And so we can add that particular scheme if you'd like us to. We could certainly add it to the, one of the many we have.
Hold on, if I, I put my hand down.
We don't have time. Yeah. Can we quickly wrap up with Coach Smith?
I was just going to say that I actually really am excited about having a lot of these plans. The only one thing that I, right now, am thinking about, having a little bit of concerns of, is the content being, um, location. And my gut feeling in just, in terms of visibility and stuff, I, I, I don't, I don't see that going more than two or three floors. And, and the other, the other site, obviously, because it's partly below the surface in terms of McLaughlin, that, you know, I'm less worried about that, that site in terms of going height. The thing is, is when you look at the map, you see across the street, the coffee shop. And then it's really an wide-open area right there with the parking lot. And then the closest buildings really to it are one floor. And so going up to five or four floors right there just seems to sit out drastically. And I mean, in terms of scale, I'm concerned about that.
Yeah. The one thing to do is once you start to go up though, you do start to catch some very, very interesting views, very dynamic views that I think are very compelling.
May I suggest that it might be more efficient for us to submit our comments and response, reactions to the downtown law? Would it be soon enough, say, by, in the next week? Okay, and then are we going to have an opportunity to, to comment again? Okay, great. Well, I'm sorry, we didn't have enough time this evening, but we do need to wrap up. And we'll, we'll get those comments to you, and we'll hope to see you again. Thank you. And we don't have a city manager's report today, is that correct? Oh, we do. I have a six, city manager's report. Response did you get?
And the citizen members, I have, I think, three out of five.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, so I'm not sure if, again, I'm not sure where.
Wednesday night.
We can go Tuesday or Wednesday, depending on, and you're already here on Tuesday, so it's. For Tuesday.
Um, is the members problem with Tuesday? I can make Tuesday.
I think Nancy, we're talking about eight o'clock or if we have had the urban renewal. Is that correct? Okay.